Good evening. Okay, thank you. You ready Jake? Great, it's six o'clock and so we're going to begin the Clicktack Commissioners, County Commissioners Town Hall. Welcome to our town hall. This gathering is offered by the Clicktack County Commissioners. Thank you. This is in the spirit of when neighbors could get together and have conversations about current issues or things of concern and help find answers for each other. When we first talked about the town hall a few weeks ago when we decided to hold this one, the thought was an open forum. And after comments this week or after discussions this week between the board, suggestions were made by each of the commissioners and so we formulated a format, depending on which suggestions came forward from each commissioner. So unlike our weekly public comment, tonight's meeting will focus on questions only. Please make sure to sign in on the meeting sheet and noting if you have a question to ask. We will work our way through the list so that everyone gets a chance to have their questions answered. And if time allow, we will circle back for more questions. We're also leaving the option open to extend this meeting if all goes well and people need more time. In light of the negative political climate nationally and locally, the commissioners have chosen a format for this evening's meeting. Please abide by these rules so that all can feel respected and heard, including the commissioners. In consideration of others, please abide by these rules or you'll be asked to leave the room. You will be called to come to the front in order from tonight's sign in sheet or chosen from Zoom if you raise your hand or unmute yourself and wish to speak or ask a question. Please state which commissioner you would like to address your question two or all three. State your question, simple and to the point. Remember, we are not entertaining comments or opinions tonight. In the interest of time for all, we are allowing one to two minutes for a question. Response time is limited to three minutes from the commissioners chosen or three minutes from each commissioner if all three need to respond. We will then allow one minute if needed for an alternative follow up question. Commissioners' response time is again three minutes. And as posted on the door, welcome to Clicktack County Commissioners Town Hall. There will be no accusations, name calling. This meeting is for grownups. Thank you so much.
And this is the sign in sheet, so I don't know if you wanted to go by topic, which is kind of the thought or just pick somebody and then see who else has that topic? Or if you just want to go individual questions randomly?
Okay, nobody ever. And where's Mr. Smith? There he is.
I'm kind of fine with not going by the list and just asking somebody for a hand.
Okay.
Then they come forward and then we stick to whatever topic they have. Ask anybody else in the room if they want to comment on this topic.
Okay.
And then we can raise a hand for a new topic.
Okay. Okay.
But I said it's more our responses that are going to drag the time out.
Okay. Would someone like to raise your hand to go first? We have those that nobody ever wants to go first.
How we just determined about three seconds ago how we're going to run this rather than just random questions where that might be a jail question, that might be a solar question, then five minutes later we're back to the jail. We're going to have somebody come forward, propose a topic, ask the question. And then we'll have the questions back and forth with them. But then whatever question that is gardening, we'll ask anybody else have questions about gardening and just kind of stick to topics. And when that topic's over, then we'll move on. Who's got a new topic? And then try to stick all those questions into that topic as well. And then we can come back at the end if you want.
We'll try to be around 20 minutes a topic so that one thing doesn't dominate the whole discussion.
Great.
Anybody want to start?
Somebody be brave. Great. Sheriff Songer.
We miss an opportunity.
He must be a big gardener. He wants to start on that garden topic.
Yeah, right.
I don't think we need timers.
I'll make a very short question. Obviously in the jail area, but it involves the sheriff's office. Do the Board of County Commissioners, you, Lauren, Jake, and Dan, do you plan on cutting my administration, like Lauren Culp, for example? Budget?
The funding for his payroll and benefits?
Yes.
I'm a no.
We will move the jail budget that stays with the jail and then the administrative budget that goes to the sheriff goes to the budget and that will be allotted under your discretion.
That one I didn't quite get the last of that.
It'll be allotted. I know my mic cut out. It'll be allotted under your discretion. Your budget will be.
So it'd be up to me whether administrator gets cut or not.
Yes, under your budget.
Yes, under the sheriff's budget.
From my perspective, the administration of the jail, the dollars that has been used to administer the jail.
1.8 million.
No, 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 for administer, for the management of the jail.
Right.
Stays with the jail. Otherwise, we have to come up with the difference in the dollars.
Well, see, it's never been with the jail. It's always been under the sheriff.
But the, but the actual dollars, the same thing happened when this, when this occurred in Benton County. And when the dollars in Benton County, when they moved the jail over, the administration of the jail that was in your administrative budget moved with it to provide for that cost.
It was always taken out of the sheriff's budget is what I'm telling you. But maybe that's something the court will have to decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Along that subject, anyone else? Jail budget, anyone else? Come forward, please. Yeah, it helps. You don't have to.
We prefer it, but then like I said, ask a question, we'll give it back. Ask another one. You know, we back and forth with as many questions as you want, as long as you don't take that.
I've got a subject really bothers me. The DOC. Why are we doing it? There was a gentleman in here months ago that said it's going to cost us eight and a half million. Don't you think that citizens have budgets also? Where are we supposed to come up with this money? We'll be paying for all of this. Is there a grant that's going to come through? What, what's going to happen? This is ridiculous and the people.
It's questioned and there was two questions.
Okay.
Anybody want to start?
Go ahead Jake.
Grant maybe? She did send you a grant or the eight million number?
Thank you for the question. We actually were just talking about this earlier. I've heard all sorts of numbers, eight and a half million, three million. Currently, the sheriff's budget for the jail that was originally set for the year was about 1.8 million dollars. I'm giving you estimates. It's not exacts. Okay, on that, we're already running that about, it's going to be about $175,000 over that is the estimate that I've seen in the documents. So we could be well over 2 million. What we had originally budgeted in the, the budget that we just discussed this afternoon was about 2.3 million. I, did I say 1.1? I think I meant 2.1 is thereabouts. So it's potentially about $200,000 higher and that's with the, the cost associated with medical because the, but the sheriff's budget didn't adequately this year address the medical costs. The medical costs are much higher than what was budgeted. And so we're, we've, that has to get done in a supplemental budget, which we've done one bit of that supplemental budget in a month ago. Oh, sorry. I'll get, get to it. So we're looking at maybe 2.3 million total. Of that, we get to subtract off about potentially $140,000 for the, the position that the sheriff was just talking about because it's going to come over in administration. So that's money that's not counting. It's, it's not extra dollars to the taxpayers. And then on top of that, we are looking at grants. There's a potentially large grant that we'll be getting mid-year. That'll, and then there's also the 1115 dollars or not dollars, but agreements so that we won't have to, to get the medical costs any longer because people will get to keep their Medicaid. So in the end, the goal is to have the sheriff's budget at about 1.8 or less and I'm talking net dollars. And that's my goal.
And you mean the jail budget?
The jail budget. Thank you so much. It's hard when he's sitting right there and you're looking at him.
Remind me again, because it was, we're sidetracked. You had, you, the quote of $8 million for the budget and the second question was?
The grants.
Where are you going to get the money? Where are you going to get the money? Is there grants?
Oh, grant, got it. Yep, okay. Shorter doing that, Shilla's budget was 1.8. We're estimating it this year at 2.3, 2.5. Eight is never been a conversation here. It is possible that that grows to 3.5, but that's also, there's a $2 million grant that might be able to come in to pay for some of the healthcare and all that kind of stuff. We'll have to see how that goes. And that should pretty much cover the numbers and the grant unless you have a follow up question.
And I think my seatmates have answered the questions. We've, we've worked hard at being diligent and crossing our Ts and nodding our Is and trying to see what it would really cost us.
And if I may add, right now at the end of today, based on some not perfect figures, we're down to about 1.75 million dollars still we need to find revenues for or cuts for this next budget cycle.
That's a lot of money.
We did it last year, so.
We started at 4.7, so.
We've made major progress.
Any follow up questions on jail budget?
Yes, I would like to ask, how many people are going to lose their jobs? This is very serious. You're messing with people's lives.
Yep.
It's just a question. How many people are going to lose their jobs?
You want me to go first?
You went first last time. I'll go first this time. It's my intention that nobody loses their jobs. All 16 employees are still working in the jail plus an administrator. So it will be a plus one, especially if Colt goes over to the sheriff's office. There will be a plus one to the, to the staff, not a minus one. And then there's also potential that there will probably be over the next six months, even one or two more via budget people or health people, but nobody's losing a job that I know of.
Good. No, we've never talked about, we've, we've thought about them. We've worked very hard to make sure people retain their jobs.
Okay, that's all I got. And by the way, Debbie Wagner from Goldendale.
Thank you. Anyone else on the jail issue? Delmer?
Delmar Eldred, Goldendale. Because I understand we're looking at 68 million dollars expenditures and you've got 62 million dollars in revenue, four million, $4 million shortfall. And here, this Department of Corrections, you people have no idea what the future of this is. You cannot determine a budget because things keep adding up. You have a director, you're going to have to have assistant director, you're going to have to have clerical staff.
Can you form?
I'm not done yet.
But can you form it in a question that we can answer for? Okay.
And then you've got transportation cost. And then the one thing that you guys were really avid about was that these people need medical help, mental help and you're, so you're going to have to provide some type of mental help that you have requested for these people. And so anyway, every, every other month or every other week, we have another essential cost that's going to come in with the Department of Corrections. And you guys are, have a $4 million shortfall? You should take the path that's the least expensive and stop messing with it. I mean, people are, people.
Delmer.
Nope, no.
Yep, we're in a question.
What are you guys going to do? What are you guys going to start curbing your spending and act responsible?
There's a question. Thank you. We've worked very, very hard and investigated every side and brought in every professional service that we can find to help us find what our costs are going to be, what kind of services we have to provide, Department of Corrections from the state. Everybody has been helping with information and moving through our process through the last few months. That's why it's taken so long because we're looking under every stone for what we have to provide and what the costs are going to be because we have to set up a program and you have to apply costs to that. And we factored that into our budget for this year. And I think you heard from our commissioners already that we've gotten that cost down, the overage of over 4 million down to just a little bit above 2 million. And we're only two to three weeks into the budget process. We have all the way through early November to get through this budget and ratify it and bring it into balance. And we did it last year. And I have high hopes we'll do it this year. As far as extra spending, we are looking at some very incredible grants that are going to help us with the healthcare and the new age of what the jail is going through for mental health and drug abuse. So those are going to help a lot. And Mr. Anderson?
Every year, this board, for known memory, at least back until 2009, we have not spent more, we have not spent more money than we've brought in. We have put money into reserves every year and we do that by making sure that our, our, when we budget, we budget our expenses a little bit high because otherwise you have to go back and do budget amendments. But we also budget our revenues low and that has been the board's direction for the last many years. We have millions of dollars of reserves. The sky is not falling. It's definitely a difficult budget cycle. And we've known that since both Dan and I came into office that the delta continues to get tighter and tighter and the landfill cannot continue to meet it. The, the people who've truly taken a cut in the budget the last three years has been the road fund. We used to put a million dollars into the road fund every year off of the landfill and that's been reduced to about $250,000. There have been really no other major cuts anywhere near that. The budget will continue to get tighter, but as, as you ask, we started about $5 million when we started, you know, when, when staff and departments gave their, gave their budgets to us. We started at 5 million. Staff worked to get that down to about two and a half. We're now down to 1.75 roughly. Staff has to work out that number. And we're only two weeks into the budget cycle. We've got a whole lot more departments and we've got other levers. And this is, this is, we're down to 1.75 and this is, this is net without having to raise taxes on anyone except for the 1% that we take every year. That was baked into the budget, but no other sales tax or anything else has, has been. I know it came up recently. That has not been broached as the answer to fulfill, fill that hole.
It's going to be a seven hour meeting if our answers are five minutes each time. First off, I would appreciate if the board would say we less because when you say we, you're speaking for me and I may not agree. So I would prefer more eyes than we's. Anyway, on a side note, when is the board going to curb their spending? I don't know. I've tried to initiate that for years. Part of the budget process last year, we knew this was coming and that process was to reevaluate how many people we have employed in this county. Our, our insurance is based off the number of employees we have and we have the same number of employees as counties twice our size. That means we provide a lot of services that they don't provide, but what services could we not provide and still get by without raising your taxes? So the purpose or the thought I had was to go out to public surveys and find out what services you use. Where do you want to expand? Get your take to see where we might be able to trim the budget. Now, I don't want to lay any name off. Anybody that's employed, I'm not looking at laying you off. What my thought was is if we see, okay, we can move down one employee in this office. We do that through attrition. When somebody leaves, we no longer fill the position. We move this person there and here and here and then no longer fill that org chart so that we can still live within our budget. That was the plan last budget cycle. It has not happened this year. That is the reason why I voted no on filling all the, the vacant positions this year. Because I, I too believe we have a spending problem.
So any more questions on the jail budget?
Sheriff's budget be considered close enough with jail budget?
There's.
Absolutely.
Okay. Sure.
Yeah Jake, quit shaking your head.
All right, if I may be permitted just to run down some numbers so my question makes sense. Our cities, both municipal police departments have about one officer for every 500 residents. Both cities combined have about 5.5 square miles of our county. Outside of the incorporated areas, we have about 850 residents per deputy. We have 1,900 square miles. We have three deputies on any given shift. That means one deputy is responsible for 650 square miles. Got that? We have not, our per capita continues to grow. We had by far fewer people and more deputies per head years ago. So my question flatly out is, why are you so ill conceived, hostile to public safety that you would even begin to cut the sheriff's budget and not be looking at trying to add more money to add more deputies? We have more crime because of the drugs and people expect more and they have less to do it with than any of the cities.
Let us get the question and then you might want to follow up. Stay there. You might want to follow up. Anybody want to go first? You want me to go first?
Go ahead.
I'm, I already said I'm not cutting his budget, so that, that part of it didn't apply to me. The question is actually, why don't you increase it? Correct. Now, I understand the sheriff did ask in his budget for two new deputies this year. I don't know honestly whether I can say yes or no to that because I don't think we have the money currently. What I do think and I would be willing to do is work with the sheriff to see what he needs to go out to a law enforcement levy if it's two new deputies, find out what that cost is going to be and then go with him to sell that to the American people, which I believe the American people will vote yes on as long as the money is going for the service that we tell them it's going for, which is two new deputies and a new squad car and a new computer. And I would sell that and I would vote on it. Now, what I wouldn't vote on is, and what I wouldn't sell is if we're selling it as a law enforcement levy to raise $2 million of which the sheriff only gets 100 grand of. Because I think you're selling the wrong sale. I think you're becoming a salesman and you're not being very truthful. But how we word that law enforcement levy, I would be very interested in and if it's worded correctly and the money's going to the right place and that's what we're telling the, the American people, I'm all for it. So in other words, so it's not just a shell game to increase the general budget by backdooring into the sheriff? We've all lived places that constantly runs law enforcement levies, fire levies and EMS levies. And then they raise $2 million. They put it in the sheriff's budget or EMS or whatever they do. And then they suck $2 million of general fund out to do sex changes for 12 years old. Exactly. And we've all seen that. That's, that's government in a nutshell. That's not me. I want to tell you what you're going to get for the money, put it in a contract. You have my word on it and that's where I'm going to spend it. And if that isn't where I'm going to spend it, I'm not going to vote for it and I'm not going to push it. That's my answer to your question.
I think it's pretty obvious when we still got 1.75 million dollars to trim out of the budget, adding employees is really difficult unless those employees come with revenue. We are adding employees in the health department. We will hopefully be very soon adding employees in the behavioral health department that will be able to work in the jail. So we can add employees where we have revenues. The issue we have is the general fund. That's, that's where the loss is. The sheriff's and the sheriff's department, as well as the rest of all of public safety is in the general fund. And at some point, I think this, the community and it's, I was thinking 26 would have to be the time, but it may be in 25. The only way that we keep the services at the levels that we all have grown to appreciate is through a public safety levy. Just because we are getting in, all of our department heads and directors and electeds have done a great job the last three years continuing to eat away at their budgets through, because we've known, you know, the writing is on the wall in every county and every city in the state. And we have to, we have to choose as a community whether or not we're going to, where we're going to put our priorities when it comes to public safety and we have to put our money where our mouth is because the state is not just going to come down and fix all of our problems for us.
So I agree. We are short deputies. We need more coverage. I agree with Mr. Christopher about the levies. We need to learn about those. We need to learn how those function and how we can apply those correctly under law and how that all works. We haven't had those full discussions yet. And I also agree with Mr. Anderson that we are adding bodies and we are adding, the health department ones are through grants, which we were lucky to obtain. But we can place some of those off of each other and use those monies in other places hopefully. For me, I'm not the sky is falling on this budget. I think we can balance this budget and he does have a request in for two more deputies and that will be considered in this budget cycle. And it's my goal to fulfill that budget and if we can hire the deputies, we will.
So follow up question. I heard one of you referred to, there's still 250,000 left with the road department. So when you have a crime going on in your house, would you rather worry about running into a pothole or having another deputy to call? Should we call Public Works to help out with the crime?
I think it was a statement.
Question if you.
Nope.
There seems to be some confusion. Is your question, what's more? Okay, I was trying to figure out if one was more important than the other and that was your question.
I'm going to take one ask here and see if there's anyone on Zoom tonight that has a question about the jail budgets. That's where we started or the sheriff budget. And I haven't seen anyone unmute or raise their hand. Good, good evening Russ.
Good evening. Thanks for taking my call. I just want some clarification on the two deputies the sheriff was asking for. My understanding is that that's two vacant spots because of promotions. And he could possibly be looking at five open spots by the end of the year or so. And I just wanted to know what assurance we have that we're going to fill those existing positions since we haven't added deputies for nearly 20 years.
Since it's a commissioner town hall and that sounds like a good question for the sheriff, I will try to answer it. I believe he has five open positions currently, but is asking to have two more over the top of that five. Feel free to correct me if I'm wrong. If that was your question.
Okay.
And as far as what is assured of filling those, you know, we don't know. You, we have to get ready. We have to put out the request for qualifications, put them through the wringer and see who wants to become a deputy for.
That, that one's out of our purview. That's in the sheriff's office. That's why I said that's a question for the sheriff. Any follow up question to that at all or Jake?
No, I, I think we're talking about the budget and in the budget you said how many people you can have. And the sheriff's budget that he presented asked for two new commissioned officers on top of what he's all been budgeted for. And that was after the board sent out their budget request for a no change budget.
Do you need a follow up question Russ? Any clarification?
Well, my question is, I know they have shortages right now and they're going to have more, so they won't be up to full staffing. Are you guys going to provide funding in his budget to bring him up to full staffing? Not additional, but just back to full staffing, which I believe is 20.
He, he is budgeted for those open positions and the primary, the budget for 2025, he was asking for was though all those positions plus two more.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We'll go ahead and stay online. Kaylee?
Yes, hi. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Yep, okay. I have actually a follow up question to the last question. We all know that finding people who want to be in law enforcement right now is going to be quite difficult if he does not fill the five vacant spots and we add two more to the org chart. What happens to that $300,000 if he can only find three new deputies to take the open positions? What happens to that money? That's it for now.
We fill as we can fill and the money stays in his budget. And we keep looking for employees.
I guess I can, I can follow that up. That's, that's a great question Kaylee. Because it's a general fund budget, at the end of the year, that money doesn't stay in their budget. Like if it's a, if it's in a, one of our 500 level funds, that money just gets rolled into fund balance or it can get put into cumulative reserve. And that's one of the ways that every year, when we build our budget, the budget balances. But if somebody does it and usually how we. But if somebody does it, and usually how we put money in reserves every year is because we have vacancies throughout the year. And that money goes back into reserves for rainy day funds, for projects, for anything that, that may be needed.
Does that make sense, Kay? It's year by year.
Yeah. And I guess I would add to it. If he's got five employees that cost a hundred thousand dollars a year that are open positions and he wants to add two more that are a hundred thousand. Yes, it would move his budget from five hundred to seven hundred thousand, but he would spend zero dollars at the end of the year if he never hired anybody. So then we would just take the seven hundred grand, put it back in our bank account and give it to him again the next year. Does that make sense?
That makes total sense. Thank you.
Layman's terms.
I like layman's terms.
Thank you.
Hey, follow up. Do you want to stay online or back to the room? I saw a hand in the room, but I don't know.
Uh, let's go to back to the room. Adrian Bradford?
Thank you, commissioners. This uh, question is for all three commissioners. Um, it is not a question of the budget of the jail or the budget of the sheriff, but it is a question that about the sheriff and the jail that would affect the county budget. What can B O C C tell the public about the two major lawsuits that we believe to be filed against the county regarding two human catastrophes that occurred inside the jail? Those lawsuits that are believed to be claims of ten and twenty, up to thirty million dollars. Are those lawsuits active and unresolved?
You want to go first? I'll go first. Um, the first question is what can we tell you about the two incidents that happened in the jail? Um, not much that, for me anyway, not much that you don't already know. I, I probably know exactly as much as you know. Um, they are not in our purview. They are in the purview of the sheriff and the prosecutor and the insurance company. We don't need to know. Um, so we, sorry, I said we, I don't need to know. So I don't know. Um, I can, I can't disclose what happened in executive session with the prosecutor, but I can disclose that we have not. I have not got any updates on why they happened, how they happened, what went wrong, what could have been better. None of that has happened. Uh, either in open or closed session that I know of. And that answer?
Right. And that, that's what we know about them too. That's, you know, there's.
My question is, I'll treat it as a follow up. Are those lawsuits active and unresolved?
I believe one of them has been filed. The other one hasn't been filed, but that's, it's, I think that's correct, but they might correct me if I'm wrong.
I believe the first one uh, was a tort claim. And so with the tort claim, you go into negotiations and those are negotiations that last I heard or have not been resolved. Uh, so it could become a lawsuit. The second one has not become a tort claim as of yet. Uh, we just hear rumblings about it. And as for the rest of it, I wish we could tell you more, but this is threatening potential litigation and we don't want to put our uh, insurance on the line for anything else that could be said.
We pay for that insurance.
Right. I got one that, that's what I wanted to kind of follow up. You mentioned the cost of the lawsuits. Uh, our county deductible on cases like this is twenty five thousand. So anything more than that is paid by the insurance company. Yes, it has potential to increase your premiums. Uh, but as we, as the person that sits on the risk team with the insurance company, we, we have far less claims than everybody else. So I'm not as concerned of these issues raising our claims as I am with the five cases in some other county. Raising our claims more because we are a pool.
And we do have a limit. So twenty thousand is the least, but if the claim goes over twenty minute, twenty million, you are actually on the hook.
I think we have gap over twenty.
I don't think.
Yeah, I, I heard it's.
I fully understand the issue that in when lawsuits, there's so very little that you are permitted to say to the public. I understand that. Uh, but the lawsuits, uh, insurance companies don't have to pay what they're, what you expect they're going to pay. If the claim is something other than egregious malfeasance and then egregious mal neglect, they can say our insurance doesn't cover it.
That is, that is entirely possible. Yes. I um, the last insurance uh, um, conference we had. Uh, I was talking to the attorney that was also the one doing our case and she's got ten active um, throughout all the counties. And she just settled one of them for about nine hundred and fifty thousand. That's not saying they're all that price and there's not some that are three hundred million. Uh, but that, that's the information I have. So that's what I'm checking.
And I believe Commissioner Christopher, you are correct. We bought a gap insurance for five million dollars. So we're covered up to twenty five million dollars.
That's the number that I'm glad to hear. Thank you.
I wish it was a hundred.
And I actually think I, I hate to say it because I could be wrong because, you know, insurance isn't my forte, but I think we even went up another five over that this year, but I would need to double check that. Because when, when the last uh, suicide lawsuit ended at twenty plus million, it scared all of us. So we, we decided to pay higher premiums to build up our cash reserves in that insurance pool. Uh, and extend our gap coverage to make sure that we're not left holding the bag. Um, so I, I do believe we've upped our gap by choice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Follow up questions to that in the room or a new question? Mr. Song or go again?
I'll make a real short question. Uh, this is to Lori and Jake. Is Chief Criminal Deputy Lauren Culp targeted to be cut?
Absolutely not. And that, he works for you? But that's, that's where that's at.
Clear answer. What we do is we give you the budget. Who you decide to hire and how you do it is up to you.
According to the law, yeah.
Yep.
So we can't tell you, you need to cut any one person. That's not how, that's not how the law works.
Well, I thought his name came up though.
Not from us. I ever remember.
You don't remember that?
No, not in here. No.
I, I will answer even though you didn't address it to me. You have to be careful in wording because Jake is correct. We give you a budget number and you spend it accordingly. So if we only pay you for nineteen employees instead of twenty, you get to figure out which one isn't staying. Um, not us.
So the administration stays and they cut two from the deputy?
I.
What I had said previously was the same thing that happened in Benton County and that the money associated with the commander position of the jail stays with the jail. And that was what happened in Benton County. And that was the only, one of the ways that I see this happening here. Otherwise we're creating a new position or, or adding a, adding a position or.
Correct. Because now Benton County, when they did that, was that being paid out of the jail budget at the time? Cause this one was paid out of the sheriff's budget, not the jail budget.
The jail budget was the sheriff's budget. It's just a sub fund.
Right. I think, I think what you're, what I'm hearing, I won't put words in anybody's mouth, but what I'm hearing is the wages that you used to pay Mr. Culp with are potentially going to be sucked out of your budget to pay the new corrections guy, which means you don't have the funding to pay Culp. Even though you're allowed to keep him by law. So I don't know how you're funding him unless you find it somewhere else.
We'll work on it.
So I, I could be wrong in what I'm hearing, but that's how I read between the lines. And that is not my purview, by the way, Bob. I plan on funding all of the people you currently have.
Online? Uh, anyone raise your hand or unmute and we'll call on you. Seen nobody in the room. Is there anybody with a question in the room?
New topic even maybe?
Anything? Land use planning?
Yeah, we spent forty minutes on that topic.
Dog pounds?
Lisa Evans.
Perkham rentals?
How'd you know?
Jake now step out of the room again.
Lisa Evans, White Salmon. And yeah, no, that is my question. August twenty third, twenty three. Uh, the, a very good short term rental draft was essentially approved and um, there was the, the next step was to take it to public comment. Um, where do we stand with that at this point?
I don't know if it was fully approved. It went back to the PA's office and I think he felt there needed to be more work on it. So we kind of stalled out at that point was my recollection.
Well, I wouldn't look to the guy who recused himself from the conversation. You can ask me if you want. Um, I'm not going to speak for Commissioner Zoller, but it is my understanding that um, as Jake has recused himself, me and Commissioner Zoller uh, reached an impasse. Um, and I don't want to put words in your mouth.
I'm thinking.
So correct me if I'm wrong. Um, she did not want to put any regulation stipulations, permit, anything, nothing, just uh, um, grandfather everything.
Nope.
Um, kind of scenario. And again, correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that is my regulation. And my recollection is I wanted um, permit fees because we don't know much about them. So I want permit fees, but low permit fees. I want people to have to register them so we can track data. But not extraordinary. If you're paying twenty five bucks a year or something, tack it on to your rental. Uh, but we need to be able to know how many there are, where they are, so that future boards through comp plans and whatnot can, can understand that scenario better. And the other thing I wanted to make sure of is that they were all uh, currently up to code. Um, you weren't renting out a chicken coop, um, because you can. You weren't renting out your barn because it's been unpermitted. Um, kind of a thing. It needed to be a permitted structure. Um, so it was already up to county code. Um, and that was a check I wanted for um, public health and safety. Uh, because the people that are running your home are going to assume it's up to code and, and good to go. Um, and it's not going to collapse because Billy Bob installed the, the house last week. Um, so as long as everything was permitted through the building department and up to code, you were granted twenty five bucks. See you next year.
And my recollection thinking back was uh, Mr. Christopher and I were on the same pages. We developed a pretty good document. It was ready to go in our impasse hit when we hit the title twelve road conditions. And uh, in order to meet what Mr. Christopher was looking for, for safety and turnaround for fire engines and access, we would have to go back in and readjust our title twelve road conditions that had just been adopted. Uh, they did not uh, put those into the title twelve codes.
So we.
That's where we were, I believe.
The title twelve driveways were a minimum of twenty foot driveways. We downsized them to fourteen. Um, so my thinking was as long as your driveway is fourteen or your road is fourteen foot wide, whatever leading your house. So a fire truck or an emergency vehicle can get there. I'm fine. As long as it's fourteen feet. Uh, if it's a Jeep trail that's six feet wide and no fire truck can get there, that does not meet county code.
So I am allowed a follow up question and just real quick, um, are you aware that a lot of these short term rental sites have very strict um, uh, review systems and it is, you know, a, a lot depends, um, guests are allowed to review people's places. So if they are dumps, uh, they get reviewed as such and they are pulled off of the site. Um, there are a lot of restrictions on some of these sites for short term rentals. I was just curious. Are, are you, are you aware of, of that? That there is a very strict rating system? And S T R owners are held to a very high standard.
I, I am aware of that, but also I'm aware that if I want to rent out the house on my property, I can throw it up there and the first person that rents it shows up and has a fire and a fire truck can't get there. They have a heart attack and a heart attack and a EMS personnel can't get there. They don't know. It's my job to protect the people in the county. So I need to make sure that EMS trucks, just like any house, any building, anything we're doing now, has a minimum standard. So that a fire truck or an emergency vehicle can get to the property.
Right. So if you have a heart attack, is the EMS vehicle going to be able to make it up the road?
Yeah.
Right. So, so there is a minimum code, correct? I, I'm not trying to be facetious. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out like.
Was twenty feet.
If, if the standard is not good enough for me as a homeowner to get an ambulance up there, then yeah, I, I would definitely be concerned about having people on my property, but, but I would think the standard would be there just for anybody building a home, right?
The standard was, the sta- the driveway standard for all driveways, period. Not just.
Right, right. Well, that's, that's what I thought. So we should be meeting all minimum safety standards.
Twenty feet if they were legal ten years ago.
Right. Okay. That's what I was just checking on.
Fourteen.
Okay.
So now you only have to be fourteen.
Yep. Okay.
Well, it's much narrower than it was ten years ago.
Okay.
You, you, far more leeway.
I'm not talking about short term rentals. I just want to be very clear. Driveways and driveways have never been twenty foot wide to the house. A driveway is from the last part of the short plat to your residence. And that the county never managed that in terms of width on that driveway. It was, the twenty foot wide minimum is on the public roads and the public access roads, not on the driveway.
Okay. So I guess to my original question then, is the S T R ordinance under review right now?
Not right now.
And not right now. Okay.
And I brought that up last weekend session that I felt like, you know, it'd been timely. If we get some time again, we need to revisit the S T R.
Okay.
See what we're going to do.
Great, great. Okay. And then um, any update on the bridge um, before the meeting ends would be great. Thank you. The Hood, um, Hood River Bridge.
Thank you.
You're limited to three minutes.
I could go for two hours.
Oh, we know.
I know. That's a problem.
We are making excellent progress on the Hood River Bridge. Uh, we are now well over sixty six percent funded on our five hundred and twenty million. We received two hundred million dollars uh, from the infra grant. So our full federal ask. Washington State stepped forward with seventy five million, Oregon's at twenty million. Uh, we had a great meeting in Salem today to get some loggerheads released uh, so that we can move forward with the recorded decision. So our permitting, uh, the final permitting can begin. Uh, the, we are all gearing up for the Oregon and Washington legislative session. Where hopefully we can get a hundred and five million dollars out of Oregon and another fifty million dollars out of Washington and it'll be fully funded. Our goal is still to be in the water in October of twenty twenty five. And to uh, have the bridge open October first of twenty twenty nine. So a four year work window. Um, yes, of course, there's a bunch of stuff that has to come together in order to make that thing happen, but I am um, amazed at the professionalism and the people who are working on this project. It is moving around amazingly fast and um, going very, very well. Thank you for the question.
Three, two, four, five online.
Good evening. Three, two, three, two, four, five.
Good, good evening, everybody. This is Ken, McEwen in Goldendale. This is directed to Jake Anderson. I was wondering that, did you keep track of how many miles you, you flew back and forth? To Washington DC, was it like eighteen thousand miles? And one, one other part of the question would be, are you going to continue your, your association with the bridge project after you're out of office?
Ken, thank you for the question. I only, uh, I don't count my miles when I, when I fly back from Washington DC. Uh, what I can say though is, is that no Clickatack County residents or taxpayer dollars have paid for any trips back to DC on the bridge. That is all paid for uh, through the bridge program. Uh, and as with the association with the bridge project, uh, when the ByState Bridge Authority was created, um, I sir, the Board of County Commissioners appointed three people to serve on that for terms. One of those positions, a, a county commissioner does not have to accept one of those positions. The net, the future Board of County Commissioners, as I'm no longer a county commissioner, could rescind my appointment, but for right now I'm appointed for four years.
All right. Well, thanks for all your work you did there.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you. In the room. Good mor- or good evening, Greg. Yeah. I don't need to start another day.
Back on the short term rental issue, Jake Anderson's operated a unpermitted short term rental for how long, Jake? Eight years? Uh, he refuses to get a conditional use permit, which is required by the county. Mochi Lindblad sat here back in January third of twenty two, told him directly, he has to get a conditional use permit. If you look at all the zonings on the county codes, everyone says that if you're using your property for something that's not zoned for, you have to have a conditional use permit. He refuses to do that. He is a leader of the county. He should be setting an example. You Lori, you have a conditional use permit for your short term rental. Why doesn't he? He sat here and he decided, he decided not to have any of them investigated. So.
Okay, I can answer.
The codes say he's supposed to have one. Why doesn't he? Mochi said he's supposed to have. Why not, Jake? Why can't you follow the, the process?
Mr. And- or Mr. Anderson, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Wagner, um, yeah, I do have a C U P and that was, mine is actually a different scenario. It was actually classified as a resort, a fishing resort, because it was cabins, a series of cabins built for our business. And so I had to go through. And so I had to go through CUP years ago when Kurt Dyer was here. And I went before the Board of Adjustment and they, I believe it was Board of Adjustment, is that the one you go to? And they they authorized that it did meet the zoning for the content that was in there. So I was I was given my permit, which I'm thankful for. As far as the CUP for short term rentals, I believe Mochi was wrong. And I have talked to our building code director, because you've sent me things before saying that there are building codes they have to meet, but right now we have a difference with the building director and those that information you gave me that that does not meet that criteria for short term rentals. So until we go through the short term ordinance, I think that's our best way to coordinate it all together is go ahead and get the short term rental ordinance done. So that would be what I would work on.
And to get back to the question, I think I, why hasn't he been enforced? And people can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe we are under guidance from the prosecutor that we can't enforce short term rentals because the board before us never enforced short term rentals. And I believe that was the last legal advice we got on the matter.
And I'll correct that. It isn't because the board before didn't do it. It's because the ordinance isn't on the books. There's nothing to enforce. If George went out to write something, there'd be no code compliance because there's no code.
If you have unpermitted short term rentals that don't meet the codes, as he says, for the safety of the citizens, and you all know about it, and somebody dies at one of these facilities, they will sue the county, they will sue the owner of the property, and they will go after all the money they can get. You're setting the county up for a liable lawsuit and yet you refuse to take any action on it.
There's there's many, many counties in this state that do not have short term rental ordinances. You do have requirements at the state and they have quite a few things that you have to jump through hoops. You have to be licensed. I believe they ask for your insurance. There's all kinds of things under the state RCWs for STR. So I believe that's where they fall right now is under state purview. If the county doesn't have an ordinance, it doesn't have an ordinance. It belongs to the state.
I want to ask our local short term rental expert. You probably know this. Didn't the state just like, I don't know, recognize short term rentals like four years ago or something? Before that, they didn't even have any terminology in their thesaurus of what a short term rental was. Am I, are you, she's not familiar with what I'm saying. I could swear
Who are you asking, Dee?
No, the person that deals with all the short term rentals in the county and knows more about short term rentals than probably all of us in this room combined.
They could come up here and talk.
So I was trying to see if she had expert opinion for me. I I believe the state, and that was like right before White Salmon made their ordinance. And they did it because the state finally gave a legal description of what is a short term rental, but before that you couldn't have one. So I think it's a new development. So that's just what's ringing on the top of my head. Other people might know.
But you know, you said about other counties don't do it. Just because other counties don't do it, doesn't mean we have to go down the same road and set the county up for some liable lawsuit because the road's six feet wide and a dirt road and the fire truck can't get there or whatever.
I'll send you the RCW too.
He's supposed to stay out of it. He recused himself.
6437, so you can look up the references. But as far as other counties too, I've reached out to them and talked to them, the ones that have them, I've copied them, I've looked at them, we've tried to pull things out of them, not to recreate the wheel. And there's other counties just like us that are struggling for how do you write it, where do you write it at all these different levels? They have the same struggle we have.
White Salmon has a short term rental ordinance. You don't have to go to other counties.
Yeah.
How is it a city within the county can do it, but the county can't do it?
Even Hood River.
It's embarrassing.
Even Hood River has one. Anybody else online?
Lisa wants to follow.
Oh, Lisa? You're squiggling.
Give me the exact date that short term rentals entered legislation, but I do know that, you know, for over a dozen years now, that they have been taxed.
Mr. Mr. Wagner says she needs to come to the microphone. He can't hear you.
They've been taxed forever, but I don't think there's actually been a legal definition of what qualifies. It's Washington State. They tax you for walking. And far before they would ever give you a permit or something, but I I'll have to look it up.
I think Mr. Christopher's right. It hasn't been that many years for the definition of short term rentals and the taxation fall fell under transit housing.
Laws are technically new because you couldn't do it before Washington State even recognized them as short term rentals, even though they were taxing them without recognizing.
Right. Well, I mean, we can play semantics all day, but if you're taxing something, then you have legally recognized it, that it is occurring in your county, you know, certainly welcome. Would love to have a longer discussion on that. So thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the room with another subject?
Let's go online again.
Online, anyone?
Been neglecting online a bit.
Didn't see anybody jumping up, jumping up and down.
There's one, Kaylee again.
Oh, good. Good evening again, Kaylee.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm back in my house, so it's not so loud. I have what do I say to this question? I want to know at some point, when you guys are done dealing with all of the other crises crises going on in the county, what the commissioners can do to stand up or help us lobby against Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife? I heard you guys talking about wolves earlier. And as a rancher in Clickatack County, I can say that during our summer pasture last year up by Glenwood, we lost a cow to a wolf. However, Fish and Wildlife went up there and said it wasn't a wolf, even though the collared wolf was there that day. And 50% of our cows did not calve this year. That equates to over $30,000 loss and that's just our family. And I've heard many stories from other big ranchers in the county. So I would like to know if there is any sort of lobbying that the commissioners can do because a huge population of this county is literally living on our farmers and ranchers and we're getting zero help from the state. So that's my question.
Let's go first.
I'll go first. Thank you. Thank you, Kaylee. Yes, you are right. And the first thing I have to say is voting matters. Vote. Vote people in who are going to help you with your things at home and listen to real people. And one of the places that we really need to work on voting for Fish and Wildlife is the Fish and Wildlife Commission. It has to have a change.
We don't, we don't get that vote?
Yeah.
That's governor appointed.
Rats.
Dang it. No, I I I as a, I used to be a fishing guide. I spent 20 years lobbying the Fish and Wildlife Commission.
The commission.
And you think this panel's bad? Now, this is Oregon. You go and they literally are reading material. The papers fall out of their hand in a meeting. There there are people who are appointed because they're the governors, at least in Oregon. They they'd, the England, which was a gill net guy, would work with the guy with in Burns, because the guy in Burns didn't like wolves, but in England liked gill netting. So they'd trade votes and they'd go to elk hunts together. It's it's I was quoted in the paper last week as calling the Department of Fish and Wildlife the Department of Failure and Waste. I honestly believe that. I believe the Fish and Wildlife used to be good people. I believe the boots on the ground that we see out there are still good people. But I believe the management and the executives have been taken over by PETA. So the only way you're going to fix it is to get out the vote, but to get out the vote for a new governor. And on the wolf issue, Kaylee, back to your topic. Ever watched TV show Yellowstone? I think that's where we are on the wolf issue as well. We can lobby the governor all we want and it's a federal issue. So they've taken over and I I will be happy to lobby for you. I just, I don't think we're going to get anywhere and that's one of mine. Sometimes the truth hurts, but and that one hurts. But I don't think we're getting anywhere on it.
And Kaylee, for me too, looking forward in our future, I had hoped to with time, budget and employees, improve our natural resource department. So we have more lobbying time, employees that can help us that are engaged in the subjects and they can head to Olympia. And I suppose Mr. Anderson will talk about WASAC and the attributes of WASAC and things that they can do for us.
No, I think I'd rather talk about locally. Clickatack.
Microphone.
Come on up to the microphone and you can make your question and the comment in the form of a question as soon as I'm done. Clickatack County used to have a very robust natural resources department. The director had 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 years and years of experience. We commented on everything. I worked for that director for five years in natural resources. I used to go to the Wolf Advisory Committees. I went to all of the river committees. I worked on all the natural resources. The department is not what it used to be. The director of natural resources and economic development doesn't have that background in natural resources. I see that as a blind spot. There are emails that come through and I attend, I attempt to attend all the meetings I can, but as a county commissioner, you're pulled in 100 different directions. This is something that I hope the future board is going to work very diligently on to ensure that our natural resources department is staffed and and that the people there are commenting on all of the issues at the at the state level. We used to say in the department that you're not winning the fight. You we can't win the fight when the politics on the west side dictate the policies of the state. What we're trying to do is hold it off as long as possible for the ranchers and the farmers of Clickatack County, and that's exactly what we did for decades.
My question for the board is why haven't we supported the director of the Washington State Fish and Wildlife? He has been adamant arguing with the man that appointed him to that position to let the state control the wolf. That's why we had the Wolf Recovery Plan Committee that met for umpteen years and then they hired an $850,000 a year facilitator to try to get them off that point. But Kelly Susswind wants Fish and Wildlife in this state to manage the wolf now. They're they're rampant. I mean, we're not losing wolf population. It's growing exponentially in this state. And it's documented by State Fish and Wildlife. But our governor is listening to international environmental organizations. We're going to have grizzly bears here shortly. But support, send some kind of a support letter or whatever the Director Susswind would like from the counties and ask all of the counties in the Association of Counties to do the same thing. If the if the governor isn't going to listen to the man that he appointed, what was the point?
Can I just say one more thing?
Sure.
So I do recognize that you guys only have so much control over these issues. And I would agree that getting the counties together, and I know that you guys, you know, are in Olympia and are talking to other counties. Just making sure that it's at the forefront because they're cows. We can't protect them at night. We can't be there 24/7. And we need to remind Seattle where their meat comes from and it's not China or Mexico, or it shouldn't be. So I guess, thank you, guys. I know it's, this is Yellowstone, but it's just very frustrating when it threatens your livelihood.
And Kaylee, I I agree with you and I understand your frustrations. I I guess I'm just more of a realist. And not that we should give up or quit fighting because of what we're up against, but you fight while understanding. And that's kind of why I've had conversations with the sheriff on, you know, could we, could we do more for our citizens? When we know of a potential wolf somewhere, hey, let's release a statement so all the people in the area know. They can lock up their pets and livestock a little tighter for the next couple of weeks. The little things we could do to maybe work together between departments and help our people, but we can also lobby at the state level. And I know the wolf and the cougar issue is at WASAC. It's just not a top priority of WASAC, or at least wasn't last year when I was there. And that's kind of the follow up I have.
And this is to the previous commissioner who was just here, as well as Kaylee. I am 100% in favor of the state managing the wolf population, much like how Idaho manages their wolf population now that they've grown. Every time that we can get local control is better for the locals. And every chance we get that we can stop the federal government from managing the wolves as an endangered species west of 395 would be great. There's currently triggers in place in order to get there and we have to have so many packs and so many different districts before that can happen. And that was an agreement between the state and the feds and that agreement I think needs updated because we have enough wolves.
I think one wolf is enough or too many.
Mr. Songer, Sheriff Songer.
Now that you brought up wolves.
In the form of a question. I got lectured for both, but in the form of a question.
Well, I'll give a question a roundabout way.
There you go.
Here the last week, Sheriff, undersheriff Knops and myself attended a a meeting with the ranchers, a couple of the major ranchers, cattle growers up in Ritzville, Washington, and there was about 17 sheriffs there. And as we speak, I think it's tomorrow, Sheriff Mackey out of Stevens County will be testifying and there'll be about 20 sheriffs showing up at the Wildlife Commission. They are so fed up with the biologists, wildlife biologists, and a lot of the game wardens themselves. Although I'll have to say that this area, when it comes to the game wardens, we have a good working relationship. However, they're a very small part of the budget of the Wildlife Division, made up primarily of biologists. And they have a whole different look on. Their concern is about the the whether it's cougar, bear, wolves. That's what they want to protect. They don't care about the rancher. They have in fact, one of our local ranchers here out off of Garrison Road had two calves killed. The Wildlife Department even stated, this is last week, even stated, they the wolf collar on this wolf was in that area. The one rancher was 40 feet from the wolf the day before and seen the wolf and the collar. So they know it was in the area. It's been in that area for two or three days, according to what they said. They've spotted it. So two calves get killed. They sincerely believe it was a wolf that did the killing. And anyway, Wildlife Department responded, Washington State Wildlife Department responded, took the two carcasses in and come back and said, oh, no, no, that's coyotes. BS. So those carcasses are going to be sent to a laboratory. And if it comes back wolf, there's going to be a whole lot more coming down over this thing. I'm meeting with the ranchers tomorrow at noon with one of the US Wildlife Agents and see what they have to talk to the ranchers about. But I would mention Stevens County ordinance has deemed the wolf as a nuisance. And they said that and and there's, you can research it, fact check it, under the Constitution, under the Fifth Amendment. Bottom line's down that under that Fifth Amendment, you shall not be deprived of life, liberty or property. They are violating these individual ranchers' rights by not allowing them to be able to dispatch a wolf that's tearing up their livestock. And this has got to stop. And so we know the commission are playing politics along with the Cougar Foundation and all these other folks.
You're eventually going to get to a question, right?
Yeah. How about a resolution?
Love you, Bob.
Yeah, I knew that was coming.
Have a question, Bob?
Yeah. Stevens County Resolution.
You would like, you're you're asking if we would support a resolution to declare the wolf a nuisance in Clickatack County?
Absolutely. Violating our citizen constitutional rights under the Fifth Amendment and Washington State Constitution. And I can provide you that paperwork and a copy of the resolution.
Yeah, sure.
I I would actually be curious to see the document. So if you can get it to me, that'd be great. Um, as you were speaking, I wanted to go back and highlight something Kaylee said. And, and why I feel for the, the couple of cows that were lost here, the couple of cows that were lost there. Haley's talking about fertility rates. That is a far bigger number than a couple of cows.
Absolutely.
And, and you lose a cow, you lose their calf and the calf the next year and the calf the next year. That multiplies. And in the meantime, they give you a check about five years later for one cow.
Well, in fact, the rancher up there in Stevens County, he had a cow killed and it was confirmed a wolf kill. So they were gonna reimburse him for that cow, right? Took two years. They denied him the first time, he had to come up with a bunch of other paperwork. But two years later, he got a check. That's nonsense, absolute nonsense.
Welcome to your government, sir.
One more thing, and then I'm gonna lock my phone and I won't talk for the rest of the night. You have, I promise, you have to have it be a confirmed kill by a cougar or a wolf to get any money. So if they're pulling the wool over our eyes and saying that wasn't one of those predators, you're getting no money. But yes, the fertility thing, everybody needs to read up on it because it is a common issue in.
Yep.
Thank you, Kay.
Hey, bye. I'm locking.
And I guess my, my answer to that is Stevens County is east of three ninety-five and, and is actually state managed? So they can do that, we are federally managed, so it wouldn't have any impact here. Uh, in terms of whether or not we can pass the resolution, that's something that would need to be run by legal to ensure that, that that's, uh, constitutional or your interpretation of the Constitution is correct. There's two hundred years of jurisprudence on interpretation of the Constitution and we have the separation of powers for a reason.
Absolutely.
And, and I would, on that point, I do want to read the document. But I, I agree with Jake on what the rules on one side of three ninety-five are different than the rules on the other side of it.
Well, I'm well aware of that.
I, I know you know, but.
Go after the feds on this stuff.
Well.
Gabrielle Gibler.
No love lost with the feds.
Evening, Gabby.
Hi, um, uh, the, one of my questions will be about the need for childcare and, and the idea that when you invest those dollars, those returns on studies that were done are like four to one. And so I feel like the county needs to start addressing how every individual that wants to work in this county and be able to find childcare, um, has that opportunity. And, um, now I'm quickly gonna talk about, uh, Fish and Wildlife and, um.
We're, we're not gonna talk, we're gonna ask questions.
I, I understand the process, thank you. Um, Bob Songer is a man of many talents, but he's not a biologist. And you cannot go, I want the commissioners to state their understanding that wolves are protected federally and statewide. And then any conversations about that change, unless that comes from the federal state, is a fool's errand. And so that's what I want to understand from you guys, is not to be disrespectful to the ranchers. I want to understand how the county and the Resource Department of the county can address on conflict resolutions on how you do protect the livestock with, with what you're dealing with today, which is federal and state protections. And also how Fish and Wildlife conducts itself as a state mandate to protect and preserve resources in wildlife. Thank you.
Good night. Gabri, I think you're asking a great question. And I can speak, not from my time as a commissioner, but when I was with the Natural Resources Department and we were faced with wolves are coming, we know they're coming, we were looking at their growth patterns. And we were wondering, how can we prepare the community for wolves? Because of the way Clickit Ranching's done in Clickatuck County, it's, it's not like the west side, it's not like small areas. And so we are far more susceptible to wolves and it impacting the way of life of our ranchers. Uh, because the, uh, from our perspective of staff at the time, the range riders and, and the good things that you can do to try to stop wolves aren't gonna stop wolves. Uh, what they found in Oregon and eastern Washington is once they start depredating, you need to remove those wolves because they share that information. And we all know, uh, how good meat tastes and so do the wolves. And the problem is, is that our hands are tied. And so the idea at the time, and we knew that our hands would be tied for potentially a decade or more, depending on how fast the wolves grow, grew. And so the idea is, is that the ranchers have to do a great job keeping good documentation of their, uh, the percentage for fertility, as well as, as all the missing animals. So if we have, uh, you know, for everybody who goes up into the Simcos, if you lose on average this many, uh, head a year and then the wolves show up and you start losing X percentage higher than that, that's something that we can take to Fish and Wildlife and say, your numbers on depredations are incorrect. Also, the issue, when it takes two years to get reimbursed, those were the conversations we were having with the Wolf Advisory Group saying, look, you, we know that, that the depredations, because you have to be there within a certain timeframe. And we're talking about hundreds of square miles, it might be days before you find out. So as long as you have the backup documentation that this is, these are the numbers of my regular losses, this is where I'm at today, yes, this is likely a wolf kill. And, and then ensuring that the Wildlife Department moves forward on ensuring that people get paid sooner as well as the damage, uh, because really it's a taking on you. And so that's where we were at, uh, at the staff level. Uh, in terms of what we can do as county commissioners, I can't tell you how many times I've, I've went to Olympia and railed against, you know, the injustices of, uh, the people that don't understand how the rural world works. And it all comes down to policy. And what I found in my time in Olympia is, is that, uh, getting mad and angry and yelling at them does absolutely nothing. What you have to do is bring them here and teach them and teach your legislators and those peoples that are involved. Um, and we've actually had fair success, uh, with, uh, our outgoing, um, Head of the Department of Natural Resources, of which we were all afraid of. She learned a lot in her time of office and it was through working together so that we could actually get changes done on state DNR lands. The same thing has to happen at the state level with Fish and Wildlife. It's just more difficult because their mandate is different than DNRs.
And I think, Gabby, you asked in the beginning if the county commissioners would acknowledge that we know there is state and federal regulations and protections for wolves. And I think there's no doubt, we all know those are there, but, um, I don't want to talk for my seatmates, but I do believe we're all on the same page about the introduction of wolves and grizzly bears. And not only just for, uh, the reasons that were stated tonight, but for me, also for those animals. I don't know how you reintroduce something into the wild when we're not wild any longer. There are wild areas that are appropriate for these types of animals and, uh, inhabited by humans already, I do not think is a possibility. I think you're doing those animals a disservice as well.
And the, um, I'll just save a bunch of your time and say I agree with Commissioner Zoller.
Thank you.
Not that I disagree with Commissioner Anderson, but.
Thank you. Gabby, did you have a follow-up question? We've been offering that.
I, I do, I'm gonna say this. You are dealing with, uh, elected officials, a lot, an elected official who, who creates a committee, a commissioners on Fish and Wildlife, and that exists. And there has been a changeover on some of those members. Uh, public can show up at those meetings and speak, those are held monthly. But you as elected officials, it is your, and how do you see your role as lobbying or, or assisting in the lobbying? Let's say the turnaround on how long it takes for the state to pay a rancher or farmer for the loss of basically the equity of their farm, the money of their, of their, of their profession. How do you change those laws and how do you see yourself in that role? Because anger about who's in power and who's doing this doesn't change that you are also part of, all of us are part of how legislation moves and how you lobby for your, for what rural communities require. And you're right, rural communities are forgotten in Olympia. That is why we seek as, as constituents, uh, an answer to this question. What are you going to do as elected officials to put us on the map for Olympia? Thank you.
Start, Jake?
Sure, I think, uh, what we, what we need to focus on is, is that our natural resource, uh, department isn't what it used to be. We have, uh, job sharing that's been going on in there for quite some time. And, um, they've done a great job. Uh, Keaton has done an amazing job with the, the Salmon Recovery Funding Board. He hasn't been, wolves haven't been on his radar. And that's something that we need to direct staff to continue to work on and bring us updated information. Uh, he's a great researcher so that we can, we can appropriately apply pressure where it'll be most be effective with regards to wolves.
And short, brief, to the point?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Anderson. And I also say, Gabby, it's like every other subject, we have to stay engaged with our legislators. Uh, any groups we can join, any time we can spend, any letters we can write, we have to be the squeaky wheel and let Olympia know we're still here.
I'm gonna have to go first now, and I agree with both of them.
Oh, no.
I'm trying to save their time, they didn't come to hear me lecture.
Great, okay.
Outer in twenty minutes, is there a topic change from anybody who has not had a chance to speak?
And, and a reminder, hang on, Gabby, you can go next. And a reminder that we need to get to a question quickly so that we can answer, so that you can ask another question, so that we can answer, so you can ask another question. Uh, it should only take about twenty seconds to ask a question.
Gabby's still there. Gabby, are you still there?
Yeah, I, I've never done anything in twenty seconds, but okay.
Okay, short and sweet.
Childcare, you, uh, how do you address it in the, as an economic, um, that was my dog, not a wolf, uh, economics? I want to, I want to know how the county is honestly going to start addressing the needs of the families and the individuals who want to work, um, and have, um, childcare availability in a county that is a desert.
I will be happy to go first, that way these two will let me get a word in edgewise. Um, you know that me and you have physlog, physiological differences or whatever, mental differences in, um, whether, uh, the county providing childcare is a core function of the county to provide childcare. Um, I, I believe in limited government, I don't believe government should be involved in every little thing. Um, I believe childcare is a problem because government got too involved and made too many overburdenous regulations. Um, and as far as do I have plans to use taxpayer money to set up childcare facilities? The answer is no, but I work for the people. So if the people want me to go to a levy, uh, and put out a, uh, uh, on the ballot where they get their taxes raised seven hundred thousand dollars a year to pay for childcare and they actually want to vote for that, I will do it because they want me to do it. Um, and, but I'm not gonna do it without them telling me they want me to raise their taxes to do it. Um, that's my stance on childcare.
Uh, looking for fundings, um, I mentioned that one piece of, uh, RCW that I'm gonna look for again, Gabby, that charges, uh, large industrial projects, say one-time, uh, hit when they come in for community impact that we could apply potentially to childcare. And I was gonna look into it. Also, just staying engaged and, and being able to have the time to be on the childcare committees and, and work with people like yourselves.
And I would say, I, I hope that, uh, whoever assumes my seat, uh, come January one, continues to stay engaged with childcare, continues to advocate for dollars to be invested, uh, through grants for the creation of a childcare system in Clickatuck County. Uh, what we do not have is we have, we have a deficit of one point seven five million. Childcare is not a core county function. We can, through our, uh, roles as county commissioners, support that. But I don't see it being employed by the county. Uh, and the issue with childcare always comes not to building the buildings. Uh, it comes to the operational costs and because you lose money, uh, and that's the problem. And, uh, we have done everything we can to support WAGAP, uh, so that individuals can start small childcare organizations throughout the county. Uh, and there is a program through WAGAP and I support that.
Thank you. Thanks, Gabby.
I agree.
Mr. Smith, are you ready?
Yeah, I'll start talking.
Anybody else?
Now.
For, hang on, before we change topics, because I don't know that you're gonna talk about childcare, maybe are. Anybody else on childcare? Before we change topics. Online? Not seeing it.
I do want to ask you about the U Center. The U Center building has been, um, a building that it has basically should have been condemned years ago. It is the one thing that you do invest in as far as childcare via WAGAP. How is the county addressing the building?
Okay, uh, Mr. Smith got out of it, he sat back down.
That's still childcare.
That's, it's still.
Sorry about that, Mr. Smith.
I don't think much has changed in what we're working on with the WAGAP situation for the building right now.
Uh, we have, we have put, uh, between eighteen and twenty thousand dollars in.
He's talking about the building itself.
In, in, in White Salmon, uh, for known memory, we haven't invested in the building. I am in favor of any grants that they can get to fix that building or replace that building cause, so that we can continue to provide, uh, that childcare or after-school care. Uh, I find it very necessary for the county.
I, I would say that it's not our building, so it, it won't be taxpayer money that I spend on the building. But I would be happy to sign any letter of support they need to attain any funding they can get to upgrade that building.
Mr. Smith.
Nope, whatever you want.
Moving on.
Can we go to solar then?
Yes.
I don't know that anybody wants to talk about that, but come on.
And this is also for the candidates if there are any left.
The, the quicker your questions, the more questions you hit, you get.
Well, I had twenty, it's only down to two now.
You can ask them quick, they'll give you twenty.
So what is the board, the commissioners here, planning to do with the solar? Are we still going to have solar running down Golden Dale? Or are we gonna go eastward with it?
Currently, there is a prohibition in the Golden Dale Centerville Valley for no large-scale solar, uh, unless they go to state FSAC and we give them franchise agreements and binding site plans and road hall agreements. Um, there's no changes to solar anywhere outside the Golden Dale Centerville Valley.
And I would just add to that, that I don't think that we can deny franchise agreements or road hall agreements if they fulfill all the, the requirements, because that's a procedural issue. You just, we don't get to make decisions, uh, or use our own opinion, it's based on the facts of the matter. But Commissioner Christopher is correct that we cannot.
He said we, so I'll say I disagree with that.
And if FSAC overruns us, which is possible, um, I'm hoping not. I hope our moratorium holds like it should and we can use Planning Commission to do the valuable job that they needed to do a long time ago to do sensitive. This darn mic is not active.
Well, all three of your mics are acting up.
Yeah.
So there's an issue.
Um, but I, I'm hoping, um, I don't see any sense in road hall agreements or any other issues unless we're forced to that. But we need those, if worse comes to worse, to protect ourselves from the damages to the road and so we don't have to pay for the repairs.
I think where your question was going though, is I'm one hundred percent in favor of a solar ordinance, uh, so that we can sensitively cite solar, uh, throughout Clickatuck County.
I, I have to disagree with Ms. Solar because she said we again. I don't believe we have to provide binding site plans and road hall and franchise agreements. I think there's a risk in not doing it, that if they damage the road, we might be liable. But I believe the reward far outweighs the risk, uh, to fight it. So that's my opinion. Next question.
All right, in the future for solar panels, does anything of the commissioners have plans for Bickleton more for solar panels or not?
We, we don't, uh, if, if you're permitted to build a house, um, we don't go tell you you can or can't build a house. So currently they are permitted in the Bickleton area. I do know of one firm that is actively working on solar project number two out there, Bluebird, which everybody knows about. And I've heard rumors of a third windmill slash solar farm, uh, farther out Bickleton and more to the north. But it's only rumors at this point, I don't know any concrete about it.
I, I would say the one thing that people, uh, usually mistake with county commissioners is our opinions don't actually matter. Um, in almost everything that comes before us, it's what the law dictates, uh, that we do. And if something is permitted or permitted outright, there's nothing that we can do to stop it. What we're here to do is to shepherd the process through.
But in, sorry.
No, no, go ahead, go, go ahead.
With that, I don't know that I necessarily disagree with word for word what he said, but we do control policy. We do control if it's permitted outright, it's permitted outright. If it's not permitted outright, Cypress Creek is not permitted outright because it's going outside the OZ. They need to go to the Board of Adjustments and get a conditional use permit. We do have control over who sits on the Board of Adjustments and what their opinion is on whether solar should be in the valley or not. Uh, we have two District Three people on that board. Uh, and I did not place either one of them and I do not agree with either one of them. And I would like to replace both of them, but I don't have that vote. So currently you have at least two pro-solar people on the Board of Adjustments.
Any more to say?
Next question, maybe.
Next question?
Rebuttal between them, do you agree with them?
I agree with, more with Mr. Christopher on the issues, with his statements. I believe in sensitive hot siding. I believe the government made a huge mistake when they allowed permits to start processing prior to getting the WSU five hundred thousand dollar study that they paid for done. We should have waited until that study was done so that all extensive ag and, and other properties could have been protected and put these things in the places, the barren places where they belong. And I.
And I will.
And we, or did you mean FSAC? Because we didn't process any applications.
Right. No, well, we, we do have projects in our East County.
Oh, you're talking about our East County project, the one that we did?
Yes.
I want to piggyback, piggyback on that a little bit. It is entirely possible that FSAC grants Cypress Creek because they don't believe in our moratorium, and we have not chosen to go to court to try to defend our moratorium. Which means they got their permit in before we had a prohibition. Which, again, if we don't go to court to defend that action, they can just do it, you have to challenge it. And so far, we haven't chose to challenge it. It is possible that even if we don't give them a road hall agreement, don't give them a franchise agreement, don't give them anything, the state says, too bad. You might get Cypress Creek. But the prohibition should hold for the rest of the valley because it's there. And I want to take the opportunity to thank Commissioner Zoller for being the second vote that I've tried since the day I took office to get that to the Planning Commission and get solar prohibited in this valley. So because it wasn't done eight years ago, we might get one project, but at least we may not get twenty unless it's reversed, and anything done by one board can be undone by another.
Adam Chair, if I may respond. Just one clarification, the moratorium was put in place prior to the application to FSAC for that project.
That was the question that I was gonna ask.
Just a clarification.
Okay.
Yes, and if I said differently, I miss, oh, you're, you're correct.
Rebuttal between those two, are you good?
I don't have a rebuttal, but I have a statement, something that really, really bothers me in this whole process, is that for years, we've been under the gun and under the heat for the Endangered Species Act and every other act for land use planning and protections. And somehow miraculously, all of that is thrown out. And we get large-scale industrial projects slathered over top of, we don't even know what. Because we're not doing the EISs to the, to the level that they would have done back in the day when everyone else was imposed upon for spotted owl or every other endangered species that happened to come along. And suddenly, those things aren't important, and it's offensive, and it's been a burden to our county and the people of our county forever that we've had to do every study in the world before we could do anything. And now suddenly, we don't need those things. And I'm mystified why the federal agencies stand to the side now and let our state proceed this way.
I do agree with that statement, I do.
I just want like this.
Yeah.
Money is why they do it.
Well, I get it.
I, I think one thing is, it really is important, we get, the Board of County Commissioners gets to be the face of a lot of things that get shoved down by the state. We are a subdivision of state government. Most of our duties are to enforce the, the changes that our elected officials at the state are, are putting on us. Some of those things, we go to the state and we ask for the funds to, to administer it and manage it. We all hear about unfunded mandates, that's the world we live in, is unfunded mandates that come down from the state that we have to try to manage because we are, in essence, the face of the state at the local level in many different ways. While we are our own political subdivision and we can create our own codes, so much of what we do, we are really tied, our hands are tied. You'd think that, you know, being a county commissioner, you have, everybody thinks we have all this power, but in reality, we don't hardly have any because most of what we're dealing, doing is dealing with process. And but Commissioner Christopher was absolutely correct, when it comes to policy and setting policy, that is the one thing that we can do, and that is our legislative ability.
Do we have time for now, one more follow-up before we change? One more.
One more.
Yep, well, there's plenty other people I don't want to spend too much time on.
So I take it from all three commissioners then, if we have to deal with any problems, we gotta go to the state level to help out the county level then, and that's solar wildlife.
One of the big one right now is, we have, I'm in, I'm the Legislative Steering Committee member, and I'm also on the policy for the tax shift date, tax shift of large-scale renewable projects because they're classified. And so that is what we have to do, we have to lobby at the state. And so when I spoke earlier about trying to get people to understand and on our side, so many of these county commissioners on the west side, they don't understand that, that, you know, they have no problem putting their solar panels out here, and they have no problem giving these large companies a sales tax break, which hurts our county residents because we don't get it. They have no problem with the taxation shift issue because they don't know about it. Once, once I can explain it to them, and this is one county commissioner at a time, they get it, and then they actually go, oh, that's not fair. And they start, then, then they can start helping us. And so we've actually come a long ways on that, that tax shift, tax shift issue with, you know, Thurston County, Pierce County, Snohomish County, in fact, so that we can get to the point where we can run a bill that will actually fix it. And that takes education, and it takes a lot of work in Olympia and working with our seatmates.
And, and I would add, it takes time. I brought the tax shift issue to the table when I ran for office four years ago. And the week afterwards, the board that was sitting here is like, what, what is this tax shift thing? And they call the accessory, get everybody together, and go, holy crap, this is, what's going on? There's been work at WASAC to try to fix it, but then the solar projects get involved with the legislature and change it. So, okay, we'll fix it, but now we're only gonna pay half our taxes. No, 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 no. So Commissioner Anderson is right. It's going to take a fix at the legislative level. And to try to educate them at the damage that they're doing by making their policies, even if it's a tax policy. But the, the fix takes time, and it, it happens through education, it's not something we just get to impose, so.
And, and I would just like to clarify that prior to being a county commissioner, I worked in economic development, natural resources, and the Board of County Commissioners at the time was well aware of the tax shift issue and had, we, at the staff level and the commissioners, had discussions about how we try to fix it. This has been an ongoing issue in which this is another example where you beat your head against the wall.
Well, I would love to know the date they did that, because I was in the room every time, and they never talked about it.
All right, I will stop with the questions so somebody else can move on, all right, thank you.
Anybody hasn't spoken yet would be a good start, since we're short on time?
Anyone else in the room that hasn't spoken that would like to have the floor?
Or another topic?
Yeah.
You know, one, one part about town halls is, we see a lot, you know, we're, we're spread south then, and we're touching a million different subjects on any given day. It's hard to keep your head wrapped around it. What subjects do you see in the future that are gonna be issues for Clickatuck County? So we saw the wolf coming, what are the future issues that you think the next Board of County Commissioners is gonna have to deal with that we might not see right now?
What are we missing? That's a good one, you do have a hand up online, but I don't know that it's that question. Got a hand back in the back?
Come forward. Good evening.
Good evening, it's been a long time since I've been here, Elaine Harvey. I think you guys know of this issue, and I brought it up to your attention many times. And that's the increased craziness of the parcelization in our county. Parcelization, where people are coming in here and buying hundred acres, parceling it into twenty, ten, five. And then each of these parcels get a well, exempt, unmonitored. And then our tributary streams, Little Clickatuck, Rock Creek, others, are turning dry. I grew up here, I lived here most of my life. Little Clickatuck was never intermittent when I was a child. We swam in there all summer.
Do we have a question?
Well, my question is, you guys are approving these plats, these divisions, and these number of wells are just increasing. We have a limited amount of water. Wells are drying out in our county. When's there gonna be, you know, protection of our water resources for our creeks that have steelhead? Which are ESA listed.
You got it, go.
Something that we're sorely behind on for years and years and years, our county comp plan. And we have a new planner, he's excited, he's working towards it, and we're working towards getting that county comp plan. And then we can identify special spots, ag land that needs to be saved. We can start planning all those places and resources we need to protect, including the water.
And one, one other that I can add, we've also hired a long-range planner to help with that process, and that is primarily grant-funded, so it didn't add to the county debt issues. And one other thing I can say is that Clickatuck County has, we still do well monitoring, and we've got one of the best well-monitoring programs in Washington State. And that used to be grant-funded, but since the, since the grants ran out from the state, the Board of County Commissioners has continued to fund that because they value that so much.
And the one thing I would add to both of those is, I'm a firm believer that we should know how much groundwater is down there so that when we make our comprehensive plan, we can say, okay, develop in this area, but not in this area. So I believe we need to do more through our natural resource department to actually understand aquifer restorage areas, so that when we do a comp plan, maybe this isn't twenty-acre minimums, maybe it's a hundred acres minimum in certain areas. And other areas right next to Golden Dale can be two acres because they can be hooked up to city water. But other than that, I'd piggyback on what they said.
So, so you know, we have, so we have the best well monitor in, in this state, but we have so many wells drying out and so many wells that are having to be dug deeper because of what I'm talking about, the increased of, the increased number of exempt wells unmonitored, and I mean, not all the wells are monitored, there's only a sample that are monitored. But we have, because I worked in this county for nearly twenty years and got to know many of the landowners throughout and witnessed wells drying out, especially in the east side. I decided to live over here, thinking, oh, yeah, we're gonna, I'm gonna have a good water source over here. But the water source here in the night, night road proposed solar, you know, those are changing. And, and then we're gonna, we're gonna put a thousand straws or more into the ground from, for these solar panels, and what's that impact gonna be to our water into the future? You know, I worked in water resources and fisheries for over twenty years, so I know quite a bit. I witnessed what's happening in our county, especially on the east side.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to get this on topic, to get the next question out.
We need to catch up.
And I just want to say another statement, when I come here, you guys say, oh, yeah, well, this has to do with the Department of Health, right? They give the permits. So I went to the Department of Health, and I spoke to the commissioners of the state in the Department of Health, and they didn't even realize that they're permitting, it's impacting the east side's water. You know, they didn't even, they didn't even comprehend that. And I had to bring it to their attention and say, our creeks are going dry, why? Because of the number of, of exempt wells you guys are allowing in this county and on the whole east side. But anyways, you know, it's just a problem I see into the future with the number of shore plats that are coming in my email that are, you know, approved by you guys. And then in those applications, it says there's gonna be a new well, a new well, a new well. So, you know, you guys are sitting and approving these, and I'm worried about the future because I plan to live here forever.
Well, I'm gonna cut you off there because we still got to a question, but I will say that, yes, we do sign those shore plats because they're permitted. That's what's in the comp plan, so until we change the comp plan, we have to continue to sign those permits, or we get to pay the lawsuits for not signing. So I may not agree with two-acre parcels out where you live. I think they cause more harm than good, that's currently what's allowed in cluster ag. So until that changes during the comp plan, there's nothing I can do but sign the permit. I disagree with me.
One other thing I can add, and this is more on the personal side, it's, it's not usually the wells that cause any impact on the creeks. Because think about all the water that comes out of your well, it goes back into your septic system and right back down. The biggest impact on the creeks is, is major irrigated ag because that's growing something, and then that's going out. And when you look at the number of gallons that a, a regular house or an entire system of houses uses compared to one center pivot, the numbers are mind-boggling on how much more water is used. And the one thing in
Operation Two.
In Clickatuck County, I can say is, is that in the little Clickatuck in the east, you know, east of the Clickatuck River, most of the water rights that were issued, you know, for the first hundred years since water rights were, have been issued, almost, most of that water has been given back or has been lost to relinquishment, so you're not seeing those changes. And yes, there are areas, and we have found one area in Clickatuck County where we were water mining. And that was because of a confined aquifer, and the Board of County Commissioners, when we did find that, we did set standards in place requiring people to, to not drill in that aquifer. So when we do find an issue, we do manage it. The, the other, only other area is east far east of Clickatuck County, you know, where they grow grapes and, and carrots by, you know, the bucket loads. That is one area where there's water mining, the Department of Ecology is well aware of it. And it's a race to the bottom, it has been, but they legally have the right to do it, so we have no right to stop them.
And I would also piggyback on and add that I had one of the local well drillers out, I don't know, two months ago, I just got the bill the other day. Not to do a well, but to fix some electrical. And I asked him this question because I had been under the assumption that wells are drying up everywhere, and he's like, where? To him, oh, new wells are drying up, he knows of a couple, but it's nothing irregular from thirty years ago when he did it. So I'm not saying you're wrong, he's wrong, I'm saying we need more data. We need to know where the wells are drying up, maybe have a reporting system, so if you have friends that have a well drying up, call in the natural resources, put it on a log so that maybe we can track things. And that might help us when we go through.
We've got a, I think we've got a question from Roger Nichols.
Just one more, I just want to know if you guys are gonna monitor all these recreational lakes that people have on the east side or everywhere. They got these little ponds, and they're just pumping water out just so they can have a pond at their house, which is evaporating. And those, I guess those are okay for someone to dig, dig up water or dig a hole and fill it up with that groundwater and just let it sit there and evaporate, I mean, that's, that's not.
From most of what I ever came across, those, those swales were dug, and they weren't replenished with groundwater. Replenishing with groundwater would be a part of your five thousand gallon per day limit, and if it's under that, there's nothing we can legally do. But I do see that as an issue as well, and I think that's a state issue that's gonna have to be dealt with.
Yeah, so there's my last question.
Thank you.
Thank you, good to see you. Roger.
Yes, thank you. You guys are behind the scenes and so many things, you're involved in so much stuff, you know so much more than we do. I would like to ask each of you, if you can, tell me the question you think I should have asked you tonight.
Did, did you guys fully understand?
Yeah, what question, so we put it on them, what, what questions do we need to know? He just put it on us, what was a question that we should have been?
Oh, that's a hell of a good question. You should ask that question, that's what you should ask.
Do you like to start?
Yeah, I've got one.
Go ahead.
I think the, because I'm, I'm the one sitting here who won't be sitting here, I think the question would be, is, is, the question they would ask is, did you have any idea what you were getting into when you became a county commissioner? And the second part of that question would be, is, is would you ever do it again? And, and I would, I would respond to that question with community service is something that's always been very important to me and very important to my family. I can tell you that the, the pay that county commissioners get is not nearly enough for the hours that they put in, and that you are stretched to the limit because you, if you care about the community and you care about your neighbors, you want to be a part of every conversation, you want to be at every meeting, and you want to be involved in everything so that you can advocate for the constituents of Clickatuck County. Being a county commissioner has been one of the most rewarding things in my life that I have ever done. It has also been one of the worst things that I have ever done for my own personal health, for my own personal welfare, from being put in the middle and, and the personal attacks and so much of the nastiness and the vulgarity. and the vulgarity that you, that you come across. I had a really good gig when I worked for the county and getting elected county commissioner was probably the dumbest thing I ever did. I used to get to, when you, when your staff, you actually get to fix things most of the time. When you're a county commissioner, you're directing other people to go fix problems. They, we're professional meetingologists. That's what we do. We go to meetings and we try to find agreements and try to get other people to go do things that'll actually be successful. It's a hard, hard change and I wish all of the luck to the people who do this after me and the generations of people, and I wish them all the best. The one thing that I, that I wish we could have had happen through my entire tenure is, is that people would act with and speak with respect and speak like you're speaking to your neighbor or some, or your loved one. And that we could tamp down the rhetoric and we could work as a team, knowing that we're all working for the same thing. We might have different ways of doing things. We might have different ways of communicating, but in the end, we're working for the public and we have to always keep that in mind.
I would piggyback on what Jake said. He's, he's a hundred percent correct. It's, it's one of those, you do it because you want to help people. And, but I can't even tell you how many times I've thought of quitting. And including very recently, to tell you the truth. And my wife had to remind me that I'm not a quitter. That she's never seen me quit anything. And so it is hard. It's even harder when you come in and you upset the apple cart to get in. Because I've been called every name in the book. And while I understand other politicians have had a little flack, in my opinion, it's a little flack. I've been a Nazi, a Holocaust denier. I hate black people. I hate gay people. I started a nonprofit to build a splash pad. But oh no, it wasn't a splash pad. I started a foundation to increase my own personal wealth. I mean, what's next? Am I a predator or something? I mean, it's, it, it does hurt and I don't know, I honestly think some of the people do it just to hurt you because they can. And, and they have the power that God forbid, if somebody hurts you and you flip them off because you're in an emotional state, now you're the bad guy. They're not the bad guy for doing what they did. You're the bad guy. And you're being held to a double standard. And it's, it's very frustrating. And I would just say the amount of rhetoric for, in, in accusations that somebody's going to get when they come in here and run for office, if they are not hand chosen by the establishment, expect the same treatment as I've gotten for the last four years. With that, I'm not going to quit. I'm not going anywhere. Because the majority of you actually want things done and want fought for you, whether it be solar, whether it be mental health, whether it be cutting all the pork out of the budget, me and Jake and Lori may not agree. Lori's only been here for a year or two. We've done a lot of good in that four years. Done a lot of things. So while we may not always agree, I, I do think we work together most of the time healthy, some of the time not. But yeah, I'm talking too long like Jake. I apologize.
So I can agree with my seatmates on most of everything and, and you have to keep a sense of humor. And I've never seen so much nonsense in my entire life. And it's so hard to get anything done when you're dealing with the nonsense daily. I just, I want to work on issues. I want to work on things. Just working on the things I inherited is enough, let alone all the things that I have ideas for or wanted to work on. I can't even get to them. What I can say, a question that I wish someone would have asked tonight was about economic development. What are we doing for our future? What's our future look like in Clickatuck County? I want us to gel back together as a county and support each other and move forward and find local answers for what were we going to do for ourselves? The world out there doesn't look very good anymore. And I want to be able to take care of ourselves and our neighbors. And I want to know that we're all going to be okay here in Clickatuck County, no matter what happens to the rest of the crazy world.
I think if we had talked about economic development, we'd have had three commissioners have one hell of a debate.
I just wanted to thank you for those wonderful answers. I wanted, because I know you sit there and you get asked questions all the time. This time I wanted you to say the stuff you wanted to say and you did it all of you eloquently. Thanks so much.
Roger, you, I want to, I want to thank you. You are a statesman in your profession. You are above reproach. You are always fair. You are always accurate. And I don't know anybody that could say otherwise. I wish all journalists were as good as you, sir.
Thank you, Roger. And we still have Gabby's hand up. So. Are you still there, Gabby?
My question, yes. My question is, when are you coming into the county building? That is the Pioneer Center in White Salmon to do your town hall meetings? And I'm going to be clear, my question to Commissioner Christopher is, when are you going to give an actual apology to the woman that you did throw a finger up at? It was not her fault or her responsibility for your emotional gesture. But, and it was unnecessary. And as she's a dear friend of mine, when you bring that out, that storyline out in public, that clapback is going to be real. So those are my questions. White Salmon Pioneer Center would like to see a town hall meeting. When will that be? And then I'm sure my friend will show up and you can apologize to her, Commissioner Christopher.
First question is, I'll go to White Salmon whenever I can get a second commissioner to agree to go to White Salmon. I have been available for town halls. We never, for four years, the more the merrier. As far as the apology, let's get to an explanation on the topic. We were dealing with the COVID mask mandate and the remasking after they let you take off the masks. And I made a statement and, and I'm hoping I can stay unemotional here because I've grown a lot of the fact that I was myself a victim of childhood sexual violence. I had never told anybody, never told my family, never told my wife. Here I go. But I thought it was important for people to understand what victims may feel when they get their oxygen restricted. And I was a far more emotional state than I was now. And that followed with one citizen making fun of my alligator tears, which, okay. And the next one said that I, how dare I? I do not have the right to speak for victims of sexual violence. I'm assuming because I'm a white man. I was in an emotional state and I flipped off my Zoom screen. Was that the right thing to do? No. It was not the right thing to do. And Gabby, I have apologized to her. I will not do it monthly, every time you request it. I did apologize to her. Am I sorry for doing it? Yes. Have I apologized to the people? Yes. Have I done it since? No. But I've also learned, and, and this is, goes back to what Jake said, you, the people need to understand, we're people. You throw rocks, they hurt. And if you're going to throw rocks just for politics, they, they hurt and you're going to make a stink out of it because it pushes your political narrative. You come into office wanting to serve people and you better develop broad shoulders because you're going to be attacked constantly. And, and so, yes, I've grown. Gabby, am I sorry? Yes. Am I sorry to everybody else? Yes. Do I like the, the people that made the comments to me? Do I think they're good people? I won't answer that because I've grown.
Okay. Anyone else in the room?
We're running low on time.
Yeah.
Is there a final question?
Mr. Smith, do you have a final question? Can you come up to the?
I think we can repeat it.
Yeah.
You have to ask a question of what is the five-year plan at the county at eight o'clock when we're supposed to be leaving?
Let's keep it to a minute or less.
I can.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I was the only one that spoke on it.
We'll have to talk about it and make a date.
So I can tell you.
We'll talk about it on Tuesday.
And this is how I want to end. I think that's a great question to end because I'm ending my tenure. The five-year lookout for Clickatuck County is bright, I see. We are in a better financial position in this county than any other county in, in Washington state. We have more levers that we can pull to fix financial problems than any other county in Washington state. That puts us in a much better position to continue to provide services. I see Clickatuck County, the, the number of residents, 23,000 residents in Clickatuck County is small enough that you can still make changes and get things done and fairly represent the people that, that are underneath you. That's about 7,000 people per commissioner. Versus looking at your federal delegation where it's 150,000 people for one, for one voice and one vote. I can say that I've always tried to hear both sides of every story, that I've tried to always act fairly in all my decisions. And that, that, the, the belief in the position of the county commissioner, you hear it a little bit tonight, you know, how difficult it is, the, the hate and the spud. And I hope that, and we came in during COVID where everyone was afraid and everyone was behind a keyboard and everyone was lashing out. And that has lasted a long time. I see that changing. We don't have to match national politics. In Clickatuck County, we can still talk about hope and change and the good things for Clickatuck County. I think that the next Board of County Commissioners will hopefully have it far easier than I did. Because we have spent three and a half, almost four hard years of dealing with the issues that were put in front of us and trying to make sure that we left the county a better place than when it started. And I think we've done an admirable job of doing that. And I think that makes the job easier for the next ones. All I ask is, is that you give grace and sincerity and goodwill to those who follow in, in this seat. And please don't run them off.
And economics, I think we have, I'm working on a lot of different projects and in touch with a lot of people about different projects that are coming. And there's a lot of things that we're going to diversify into. A lot of people want to come to Clickatuck County. They want to place their factories, their businesses here. It doesn't have to be large scale industrial or anything like that, that saves us. We have a bright horizon with our, with our port district, with the airport. There's a lot of good things happening.
So I kind of want to touch on something that we talked about all the conflict. Well, the reason that conflict happened is because you had change in this county. You now have Zoom. You now have recordings. Not only do we record Tuesday meetings, but we now record Thursdays as well. So everything is far more open and accessible for the people to pay attention, which has stirred more people to pay attention and some of them are quite angry about what's going on. But it's up to the people to control my opinion. Sorry, I won't speak for the word. It's my opinion that it's up to the people to control their future. There's a lot of things, I came in wanting to update the comp plan, the critical areas ordinance, all of those, including the economic development plan, because the economic development plan for the central region here in Goldendale, our economic development for the next 10 years, solar panels and grapes. I got a problem with both of those. We don't have any grapes and I don't want solar panels in central region. So can we put into business? Can we help somebody here? And this is the, the conflict I think you would have had with economic development. We get point oh nine dollars back from the state to do economic development. We're talking millions of dollars and we've got them for about 20 years. Until my first year in office, Goldendale had received zero millions of dollars, zero. I did manage to push through and help support to get them $250,000, but that money tends to go elsewhere. I have far more issues there, lack of representation, blah, 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 blah. Poor impoverished areas, not going to get into it because again, it would have been a big, long discussion. But my point is the future is up to you because we are doing the comp plan. But are we going to do sub-area plans where the small people get to decide what's in their area? Are they going to just get ran over by the voices that matter? My worries are going to get run over by the voices that matter. Are we going to fix our economic development and make it fair and help the communities in the impoverished areas? Which is what it's for, in areas of blight, Goldendale, Lisle, Clickatuck, Wishram? Which, yeah, none of them have gotten anything. Because we're constantly building hangars at the airport or giving money to the port district. A little money to Binge and a little money to White Salmon. You guys need to pay attention. If you want economic development in your area, then damn it, show up and hold these people accountable. And, and, and go to the case PTA meetings and find out. Ask us for documents on where all that money's been spent. It took me a year and a half to get it compiled, but it's there. But your future is up to you because it's whoever you place here who's going to make all those plans for you. You have to know that they're going to ask for your opinion when they make the plan. Or are they going to make the plan based off what they're hearing in their cell phone? I don't listen to that. So I, I hope you, I'm disappointed with the amount of Zoom and everything that we've offered for the public to pay attention. And there's 30 people online. I would rather see 300. Because government will never change until the vast majority of the population starts actually paying attention. And attention to every vote. So a lot of plans to do. I wish I could have got them done while I was here, but we could never seem to get the second vote to get them started. It's now seeming like they're moving, but time will tell. Make sure you hold whoever's sitting here accountable to get them done. And I will, I will end at that.
I think that's it.
I just want to say thank you to everyone who called in, who drove up here, who asked questions. I hope we all leave a little bit brighter and wiser. And I just want to thank everyone for being kind and being courteous and showing respect. And as the sign says, everyone acting like an adult.
And I, I want to apologize for all the people that I told them, get to the question. I think I was pretty fair and not singling out anybody to make sure we can get as many questions as, because I don't mind being the bad guy and we all know Lori's the nice lady. So I, I'll be fine being the bad guy and get everybody to ask.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
What do we have on the next one?
We'll talk about it on Tuesday for White Salmon.
Does everybody want to have another one?
The fact that this one was so good, you don't even know how much that increases the chances of you. I, I would love to have this board set something up that it does it once a month around the county.
Madam Chair, make a motion to adjourn.
So that the next board might be held accountable to keep it up. There isn't about a second yet. I'm having a good time. I'll second the motion to adjourn.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
I.
Aye. Motion passes. Hello, Mayor?